Good evening. This is the work session for tomorrow's city council from Wednesday, September tenth, two thousand and twenty five.
We'll start with a little call beginning with Councilor Bartholomew.
Councilor Bartholomew present.
Council President Vermillion present.
Mayor Kaiser present.
Councilor Childers present.
Councilor Shankel present.
Councilor Gomer present.
City Manager Matt Corbeld present.
Co-compliance Specialist Kyle Murphy.
Police Lieutenant Call present.
Police Chief first of all present.
City Recorder Kristi Tietz present.
Dan Huff, City Manager, present.
Hey, we got sound. Woo-hoo. All right. Please note that if council wishes to discuss a major policy issue that is not on the agenda, it should be raised during new business for consideration at a future work session or meeting, not during the current meeting. Decisions cannot be voted on during work session. First off, I apologize about the mask. I'm doing this on the side of caution. I have a bit of a head cold or allergies, so we'll get through it. First, our topic tonight will be ordinance number two thousand and twenty five dash oh nine, RV parking on public streets. This item is a result of a goal-setting conference in January. Council directed staff to discuss this item and bring an ordinance for consideration. Work sessions have previously been held, and this item is a continuation of that work session. Mr. Corbeld, can we have your report, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I'm going to turn it over to Co-compliance Officer Murphy here in just a minute, but the mayor kind of spoke to how this came about and why we're looking at it. We're kind of seeking council's feedback tonight on a few -- thank you -- on a few additional provisions that we recognize and we kind of identified during the previous work session that probably require a little more time to discuss. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Officer Murphy.
Good evening, Kyle.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't know if you had a chance to review the current language in Exhibit A. These are the changes we have as of now. These are the changes that came from our previous work session and the input from council. So I wanted to review that and get feedback, if any, on the current language, as well as an additional proposed change to MMC Chapter fifteen, inhabitants and use of recreational vehicles that just came out recently, and then receive input on the handling of bump outs, which we never quite finished the conversation on, RV bump outs on public right-of-way. The additional change to the code language that's not on the Exhibit A that you received is in reference to MMC fifteen point oh eight point zero one zero, inhabitants and use of recreational vehicles. This deals with -- this states no person shall inhabit or use for more than ten consecutive days, which you'll see the change would be to seventy-two hours, any recreational vehicle, trailer, fifth-wheel, or other such mobile living unit without having obtained a permit for. And the question arose on whether this applies to both public and private property, or just private property, because this states you can get a permit for thirty days. Recommendation would be that this applies only to private property, and permits aren't being issued for thirty days on public right-of-way. But yeah, that was something that's not on your sheets that I wanted to also discuss. So is there any feedback on the language as it stands in Exhibit A from any mayor or council?
Council, have any comments?
I think it pretty much covers what we --
Yeah.
-- what our intent was.
Go ahead.
While you guys kind of take a second look at that, I wanted to kind of drill down a little bit on what Kyle's referencing as far as the additional language goes. So if we go to that kind of the bottom of those proposed changes of fifteen point zero eight zero one zero inhabitants use of recreational vehicles, this brings this -- the proposed changes that are on your sheet bring this in line with some of the changes that you guys wanted to see, the seventy-two hours most notably. But I think the concern that Kyle's trying to express and that I share is, are we going to allow folks to inhabit recreational vehicles for seventy-two hours on public property, other than subject to our camping ordinance that does provide a location, and remember all that, I hope, but for folks that are new, the camping ordinance, one of the things that was required is that we provide a location for RV campers, and we did provide that location in the WAP behind City Hall. So this would be a situation where, just to paint you a picture, someone could pull their RV up into a legal parking zone on the side of the street and live in it for three days, as it sits today. Actually, as it sits today, ten consecutive days, but subject to this amendment, it would be three days. And I think Kyle's proposal is that we refer this to the camping ordinance to say on -- that basically you can only use it for seventy-two hours without a permit if you're on private property. If you're on public property, you have to use it in accordance with the camping ordinance. That is, we've designated a location, and that's the location that you can use for seventy-two hours, not just any roadside.
Right.
So that, I think that's the idea of what he's getting at with that one, and I want to throw that back to you guys for discussion.
I think it's going to get really confusing with the tip-outs, because some trailers you cannot camp in unless the tip-outs are out. If the tip-outs are out, we could be in noncompliance. Isn't it state law that says the tip-outs can't be out on the street? Okay, so I honestly, on public property, I don't think that it should be allowed, any camping should be allowed, because then we're not discriminating against somebody who has tip-outs and who doesn't.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, my position is, if they've got an RV there, it's there to load up for the weekend, come back, unload for a day or whatever, and then put it in storage, unless they've got storage on their own property like an RV pad. Camping in it? No.
Reading this Chapter fifteen, to me, it sounds like this more was intended to apply to the situation of remodel, construction, something on private property
Right.
-- where you can't live in your home for a designated period, so you need to live in your RV.
RV.
I don't believe this permit was intended for people to turn the street into a campsite via a permit from the city.
Right.
And?
Did you have a comment, Council?
I did. And it's simply that sometimes an RV is parked in front of a residence because family has come from out of town, and they want to spend a night or a day or two there. And I hope that we can find a way to still be friendly to our residents and not just not have absolutely no availability for someone to do that. It seems unfriendly to me.
So when you're talking about the state law with the tip-outs, so that was my -- what she just said, and I know of some situations where they were debugging their house, so they were staying in the RV for a couple of days while everything was, all the poison crud was in there. So can they -- are we saying they cannot have tip-outs then, if that's the case?
If they're blocking right-of-way or sidewalk, which in most cases they would be, then no.
Actually, not all of them are.
Sure. And if, I believe that's what the state law is referencing, is it would need to be a hazard, blocking right-of-way in some way. And if that's not happening, then it's not a hazard.
Yeah.
That's actually a great segue into fifteen point zero eight point zero two zero, which does allow a permit for people to, who want to stay in an RV for more than seventy-two hours. And it would allow them to be able to go on a public street such that it will not create a minister public health or a public nuisance, i.e. the tip-outs don't block the street.
Mm-hmm.
That's going to be a difficult one to administer, but we get few enough of these that I don't think it's unattainable. We don't see a lot of them, so you know, if we have to go out and take a look, and I don't know what we do, measure or something like that, but we'd have to figure out a way to administer that, but that's the only thing. So there is, even if you were to say, hey, you can't camp on a public street at all unless you have this permit, then in that case, we would look at that specific permit and say, hey, I want to park in front of, you know, Mayor Kaiser's house. I'm staying over there for the week. I need a seven-day permit. So we'd just say, okay, cool. We'd probably just have them go pull up where they're going to park and then go take a couple of measurements and sign off on their permit, as long as it's not blocking something or getting into the traffic lanes. So there would still be a way for those folks who have family coming to visit and that sort of thing to be able to house them in front of their house, so long as it doesn't create that hazard that's against state law and, you know, blocking the traffic lane or the sidewalk, for whatever that's worth. I think that would be the idea. Now, the seventy-two hours, I think, is a different maybe area, because this is kind of saying that, hey, you can go to these places for seventy-two hours, but -- and park in front of Mayor Kaiser's house for three days, but if you want four, then you're going to have to have that permit. It may make more sense, since we're going to allow them to park on the public right-of-way, and we have concerns with whether or not that is going to be a safety or frankly, illegal under state law, that we say you can't camp at all on the public right-of-way without this permit. So just come get the permit, and we'll go out there and we'll take a look at it, and we'll get you approved. And that's just for camping. That's not so much for storage, I don't think. Is that right?
The fifteen, Chapter fifteen is, yes, directly for inhabitants and use.
So that's if you're inhabiting it. They're different. The standards up above deal more with the parking and leaving.
Right.
So yeah, this is more of a camping question. So if I --
Clarification on private property. If I have an RV pad, are you saying that I can't stay in my camper or RV on my private property for more than seventy-two hours?
Yes.
And is that a city ordinance, or is that a state or county?
That's a, I mean, it's a city ordinance. I'm not sure if there's a state law or a county ordinance. I don't think the county ordinance would apply.
So I can't pitch a tent in my backyard and sleep in it for seventy-two hours?
No, you can. You can't sleep in it for seventy-three hours. But no, yeah, it limits you to seventy-two hours, and I think the idea behind that is that the alternative might be that folks could set up an RV on their RV pad and have a rental unit, for instance. And I think that the purpose is to try to avoid that situation, for whatever that's worth. I think that's the idea.
And I can verify that that happens a lot, where they move an RV onto a piece of property, and somebody moves in it, and they get a holding tank and the whole bed.
I could see that.
Yeah, we don't want that.
If you're the owner of the property, you should be able to -- I pay taxes for my property.
Well, again, aren't these things kind of based on if somebody complains? I mean, a lot of it is, he would only probably go and check it if somebody complained, so it depends on what you're doing. But you know, we don't want people living in their RVs on their --
No, I know.
Yes, sir.
I think, you know, you can talk about fifty-two different
Scenarios.
scenarios that this would apply to. And most of the time, and in my experience, even in other cities besides Malala, it's not like we get a lot of complaints, and you've heard that from staff already. And the point is, is that what some people forget is that if people are staying in an RV on your property, and you're right, you should be able to do what you want to do on your own property, but if it begins to have an impact on your neighbor, your neighbor shouldn't have to put up with, you know, somebody watching TV really loud in their RV out on their driveway next to their property, or I just made that up, so, you know. And that's where it becomes a problem. And I don't think you run into those situations very often, because most people are respectful of their neighbors, more or less. You know, you get some that aren't, but if you have a thing for every little thing that somebody could possibly come up with, I mean, the ordinance is going to be sixty pages long. Just saying. And I don't know why you need to sleep in your trailer. We could come up with stories on why you need to sleep in your trailer.
The ice storm.
Oh, okay.
Those are situations. I mean, you know, yeah.
And I just, I want to just kind of point out how this would look. I think, I think it might be helpful, is that if you were on your pad for seventy-two hours, so you want to stay out there for the weekend for whatever reason, that's fine. There's no issue. If you wanted to do it longer, you're trying to do a remodel, you're trying to do something like that, then they could come get the thirty-day permit, and that would be basically an automatic approval, because we don't have to go out and measure or anything. It's like, hey, you want to stay on that private property? Okay, there you go. So I think that might be helpful to the analysis.
I also don't think Compliance Officer Murphy's going to be out necessarily patrolling for people sleeping in their trailer on their private property. You know, I'm sure there's no parking zones and other things that he'll be looking for that are a little more important right now.
No, but I've been in a situation where the people put a trailer in their lot, and then they let their son or somebody live in it, and he would, and it was there for -- it was a pain in the --
Right.
-- you know what. So we don't really want to set ourselves up for that.
And what's going to happen with, what's coming down the pipeline with, is it ADUs? Is this something that would fall into that?
No, RVs are not an ADU.
Okay. Well, I just, you know what I mean, that concept that the state's putting out that, you know, we're, every house, no matter what size it is, can have an ADU now. So I didn't know if this, if we're going to do this now, and then we're going to have to adjust it because of that.
No, they actually did come out with a bill, I want to say a year ago. I mean, there's been so many, it's hard to remember. But I think about a year ago, that basically said, hey, this state will now allow you, if you as a council wanted to say, we want to let people live in RVs in Malala on private property. You guys can now do that, whereas before you couldn't. So you're allowed to do that now, and under state law, previously you weren't able to allow that. You could allow that now, and I think it's something we discussed at the time. The county has, I believe, determined that they're allowing that at this point.
Oh, they are?
Uh-huh.
I do believe so.
They have a zone map where it's allowed.
Yeah.
Yeah. So there is some of that. The other thing you run into that's a little different between counties and cities is when you have an RV, fifth-wheel, whatever, parked, you know, behind a residence, it's kind of set up there for good. It becomes a question of where, they're flushing the toilet at some point, they're draining water. How are they going to get that out of there? Are they really going to tow it out, take it to a designated dump site and bring it back, or are they going to tap into their clean-out, which is obviously illegal and puts, you know, chemicals in our system and different things that we try to limit as much as possible or eliminate if possible.
And as somebody that was in the towing industry, you have a huge influx of abandoned RVs, which are very, very hard to get rid of, or find a towing company that will take them.
We've been talking about that a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am?
I'm not sure exactly how to get to my point here, so bear with me. I think that if somebody is going to inhabit their recreational vehicle on a public street, that they should have to have a permit, whether it's for one night or three nights. Otherwise, we're opening up three-night camping to all public areas in our city, for anybody. And I do not want to see that.
My thought was, you can't get a, the public camping needs to be referred back to the public camping ordinance, which we already done work on. This permit would only apply to private property under my proposal.
Right.
So it wouldn't be open to people coming in saying, hey, I want to apply for a permit for public property. If there's questions around camping on public right-of-way, it refers back to Chapter nine, which deals with public.
So I want to offer clarification. I think, I think what she's saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that the inhabitants and use of recreational vehicles on public property should be zero hours without a permit.
Yes.
So instead of seventy-two, and then you have to get a permit, it should be zero. You're not allowed to camp on public property other than per the ordinance or with a permit. And I think that the permit, am I hearing that part correctly?
You're hearing me exactly correct, yes.
That makes a ton of sense.
And when we're talking public property, are we talking about the street in front of the house?
Yeah, the right-aways. So if you're going to inhabit it, if you're going to stay in it.
If they're going to stay in it.
Now, if you're
They need to have a permit.
Alternatively, if you're on private property, like Councilor Gilmer is parking his, then he'd have three days or whatever time limit you guys want to give. Obviously, that's why we're here. But they'd have three days. They don't have to talk to anyone. They can come in for the weekend, camp out on his RV pad, and hit the road on Monday, or whatever case may be. Or if they're going to stay ten days, they can come stay for three and come in on Monday and grab a permit, and it'll be a sign-off at that point. It'll just be making sure we don't have people living on properties. It would just basically be a sign-off. If you want to let up, there's a space on your site or on your land, and you want to put an RV there for up to thirty days for this right now, then yeah.
One of thirty days for a year, kind of. You can only get one thirty-day permit per year?
You know, it just says thirty days.
Thirty days. So I'm hearing what you're saying. My thought was that any public camping, there wouldn't be a permit that applies for that. You can't do that. It all refers back to the, so what? I think there's a bit of a misunderstanding there, because there wouldn't be a permit allowed whatsoever for public camping. That all just refers back to Chapter nine.
To those public spaces we have set up for people who
So technically, there would be no camping on the right-of-way whatsoever, even permit or no?
How easy is it to move somebody, so let's say a houseless person that is in a RV, he shows up in the middle of the night, no insurance, no tags, no, you know it's a homeless. How easy is it to move him? Are there laws that protect a houseless person that you can't move him because it's his resident, you know, a place of living? Or are you guys able to evacuate him immediately?
Do you want to answer that question?
In my
Go ahead, Bobby.
It can become very challenging. Therefore, allowing any of it to occur, once you allow it to occur, then the longer it's there, the more difficult it can be.
Yeah.
You know, inbounding RVs is a nightmare. If they're occupied, that brings other challenges as well. There's ways to get there, but it's a process. It's not an immediate process.
However, the however here is because you guys all did work on this camping ordinance that we called it a few years ago, because we have designated a space, you know, we've taken care of time, place, and manner, if somebody chooses to just park somewhere that's not in the designated location, it is easier to get them to move. If we didn't do that, then we would have lots, it still would, it still may be problematic, especially if the RV stopped where it was because it ran out of gas, let's say. But you can tow them to the spot that we've designated, because we've designated a space. So.
I'm more concerned about the neighborhood people who have aunt and uncle coming to visit, and they're going to be camped out in their RV for the three days. What
That's exactly where I was going to go.
That's the problem right there. I don't want to really stop that.
If you guys don't mind, I'm thinking maybe pulling you If you guys don't mind, I'm thinking maybe pulling you guys on a few very salient points might be helpful to kind of move us forward on this. So would you want to allow folks who are coming into town to visit the mayor or, or Councilor Gilmer to be able to park in front of his residence for a few days in their RV and be able to stay in there such that it's not intruding into the traffic lane?
Yes.
I would be willing to do that as long as there's no tip-outs involved. And it's just every instance I've seen with the tip-outs, they're taking up sidewalk space or they're taking up street space. And the majority of the tip-outs fall in the bedroom space. And if a car hits one of them, those people are going to die.
Well, you could even constrain it more to this private property, no public access. If they want to have, if they have the, the property to store their RV.
But a lot of them don't.
See, that's, that was my, kind of what I was wanting to get at was, so if we want to allow that, obviously that would be subject to all of those, those, or maybe not obviously, that would be subject to all those restrictions of, hey, you can't have a bump-out going out in the street further than, we'll work with the police to develop a standard that meets state will offer that or blocking the ADA sidewalk. Do you, would you want to show if they were camping, let's just say again, I'm sorry, Merrick Kaiser, but in front of Merrick Kaiser's house, he doesn't have a spot and they're, they're coming to visit for, you know, a week. So they're exceeding the 72 hours that's proposed in here. Then they come and get a permit, we go out and do the measurements and we say, sorry, you, you, you're not going to be able to park it here. But we do have a public parking space for these that's available to you because we can't put a danger situation out on the road knowingly, right? So I'm, I, am I hearing, I, I heard it from a couple of you guys that, that you think, yeah, in the case where someone's coming to visit, they've, they're properly permitted and there's not a danger issue, that we do want to go ahead and allow those somehow to be able to be in front of that house. Now, there's, there's an odd situation where in front of Merrick Kaiser's house, his, his, his neighbor consistently parks all their vehicles in front of his house before he gets home. So there's not a space to park there and they're going to have to park, you know, across the street or down two houses or something like that. Would you want to maybe just require the permission of the occupant in front of the residence in which they're parked? Or it's a public street, so it's not, you guys are allowed to do what, what, what you want with it short of creating hazard?
Go ahead.
I just want to repeat my opinion. I don't think there should be any camping on public right-of-way herein.
I, I, question for Lieutenant Caller, Chief Long. If we allow this, the permit and people to camp on the street, are we going to be in conflict with our camping ordinance? Because, I mean, we all know we have some people in our community that have huge hearts. Here comes somebody that is actually homeless and now we're, they're giving them permission to park in front of their house. It's not just the family coming to town or the emergency. Is this something that you, are, would we be in a conflict of interest, number one? Number two, do you see this scenario possibly happening?
Was that for me?
No, that was for us.
So I have to reread our camping ordinance or for people that don't have a place to park their RVs and it could be a conflict because we already have language saying that if you have nowhere to go, we have designated spaces. And now we have another ordinance that's saying, oh, well, you can park here for 72 hours. So it could be in conflict with our other ordinance.
There, I think you drilled down.
Yeah.
We've drilled long enough, we've kind of got to the point I was getting at.
Yeah, and I, I think we need to, I think before we make a decision on a permit, process, hours, times, we need to figure out if what's in, if it's in conflict or not. And I don't mean to drag this out even longer than it already is, but, you know, there's no reason to keep going forward if we're going to be in conflict with ourselves unless council decides to move this forward with no camping allowed. You know, that, those are, I think those are our options right now.
And how are we going to know who's camping?
So that, that, the permit requirement is basically, you, you mean as far as evidentially proving that they're camping?
Right.
That's always a hurdle.
Okay.
That's always an obstacle.
I mean, because I, I plug in my RV as I.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's an obstacle. In fact, when I first got here, I dealt with one that was kind of living behind, kind, kind of over there behind the piano shop where the piano shop was. And that was one of the big issues in getting them out of there was that I had to find, I had to prove that they were living in it in order to be able to bring a case and, and do what I needed to do on that. So the evidentiary hurdle is always difficult with that one because you can't post up an officer to just watch, you know, or, or anything like that. But, you know, we just, we, we, we dig and figure it out and work through it.
I will, I'll share a, something I learned from a nearby city and what they do for that evidentiary, just for, food for thought. They have language in their ordinance that says if bump-outs are out in an RV, it's considered occupied. So they state it in their ordinance, if it's, if the bump-outs are out, it's considered inhabited, which I think works.
And generally, that's true.
And generally, yeah, if the bump-outs are out, it's probably, unless they're out for half an hour while you're loading it.
Yeah, that's a me situation, so, yeah, okay.
Where do we want to go, council? Do we need to wait for language to come back? Or do we give consensus on no camping on public streets?
I, I can tell you that, just harkening back, now my memory's jogging. This, the 10 days was obviously in conflict, the 72 hours is still in conflict. It, it, if you're, if you're on public property, you're supposed to be in one of those two spots for camping. So this actually does conflict and still did. It's something we, glad we're catching that now, it's a great point.
Well, and that was part of my reasoning for wanting to make this specifically to private property because that would eliminate, because this does, wouldn't apply.
Eliminate the conflict.
Yeah.
Well, again, I think no parking. Yes. I was just going to say, again, my opinion is no camping on public right-of-way.
Save it, Carter Cheats.
So I brought up the code, that language that we adopted in 2023 and section, letter D states prohibited camping. The section's regulations are meant strictly to regulate the use of public property within the city of Malala and not intended to regulate activities on private property. Number one, except, except is expressly authorized by the City of Malala Municipal Code. It is unlawful for any person to establish or occupy a campsite at any time on the following public property and/or, letter B is on all public sidewalks. So if your bump-outs are pushing into the sidewalks, then it would be in conflict of the ordinance that we also, but thank you, chief, that we, you've established. And then Chief Long just pointed out, letter F is any residential zone. So maybe that answers your question about.
So no, no camping.
Right.
So it already is prohibited.
It's already prohibited.
So it would make sense to, this to just apply to private property.
Are we good with language going far forward as stated?
I am.
Thumbs up?
Well.
Or thumbs down? Is it more deliberative? Go ahead.
No, 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 I'm just wondering, then if you're looking at Exhibit A, park, store, be stored, why would we? We have in here that they can't be on our public, public property access 72 hours without express written permission of the city manager, why, or, or designate. Why would we have that part still in there?
It, it will need to change.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, this was, this was an additional talking point that we kind of came up with a little bit later.
Okay.
If, if that's the way you guys go, we'd have to change that. So it'd just be no, no camping on public property except for in accordance with the camping ordinance, which means no camping on public property except for in those, those two spaces or those, however many spaces there are over there in the law. And, and then, and then private property would, at least under this, would just stay 72 hours without a permit. And then if you're going to do that for up to 30 days, then you, you just need a permit.
Go.
And the section you were referring to, that, that doesn't deal with camping? That is specific to.
That is strictly for parking. Okay, just want to make sure that's what I was reading.
So are we all in agreement? Counselor Schenkel?
Yeah. I just want to be able to park for a few days.
Should no, no camping on, on the private property except for in accordance with the camping ordinance? And then public property, 72 hours thereafter, you're going to need a permit.
Right.
So we, the bump-out decision would be no bump-outs. Is that sort of what we landed on? No bump-outs on this public property? And then I had one final question I wanted to bring up. Trailers being attached to vehicles or detached? Are, you had mentioned those slide-out campers and there's language in there that prohibits them from being dropped. But what about other trailers being disconnected from vehicles? Is that, is that okay if somebody comes and drops their trailer and leaves it? Or do we want language that states all trailers must be connected to a vehicle while on public right-of-way?
Are we talking like a utility trailer?
Yeah, any, any trailer. Because right now it would, it just says slide-outs can't be on public property without being attached to a vehicle. So does that apply to the rest of them or just the slide-out campers?
I've seen the language go both ways. West, Happy Valley says you cannot detach from any trailer on a public right-of-way. Oregon City says you, you, you know, you can't leave any trailer on their street. So.
The parking, parking them's allowed for how long under the current language? 72 hours?
The current change would be 72 hours in front of your own residence. So, and right now there's no language that says it has to be attached or detached. It was just a question that arose.
Officers, as far as safety goes, what are your thoughts on detached or attached?
I don't think it matters. It might be, it takes up more real estate having a vehicle attached to it.
Right.
And if you've got three, three days to park, park it there, I doubt anyone's going to be leaving it attached. Terrible for the rig.
Though, I was just thinking of this. The one thing I would like, if we could put a clause into all of this, is construction. There's times that, I'm going to use you for an example. Pence may, their dump truck may bring in a utility trailer or something and they may leave it somewhere, you know, just to work, so they can work on the job site for the day and then they take it with them at the end of the day. So no matter what we do, try not to make it as difficult and, try not to make it difficult on the construction companies that are trying to do specialty work in the city because there are some cities, like paving, there are cities that won't allow transfers to detach their trailer and go pave and then come back, grab their transfer, pave, and then come back and leave. And I don't, I don't want to make any of this that difficult, you know, when they're trying to do the city a right.
We, if the consensus from PD and from council is that it's a non-issue that whether they're attached or detached, we can, we can just leave that additional language out. We already have the slide-out language we wanted. But if there's no reason to specify that they need to be attached or detached, then we don't have to deal with it.
Perfect.
Yep, that'd be good to go. And then the other thing I was going to ask is, is, and this is kind of a curveball, sorry, folks. And we're getting close to finishing this thing off. But the 30-day rule on permits. You know, if you've got someone building a house, right? And, and, and we want to allow them to be able to, you know, live in an RV while they're building a house or something like that, do you guys want to be able to allow folks to do that? Because right now, we have no mechanism to provide them more than 30 days. Whereas if we could provide them some other extended period of time, I wouldn't go too crazy because then people will just not build. Some, some not, you know, no. But, you know, so I, I, I just thought that that might be something to chew on where, hey, you know, so-and-so's house burned down or fell over or whatever.
They're doing major remodeling or something and need to be, I, I think they should be granted.
Could this be something like, if it's going to go over the 30 days, it could come to council? And then council gives that approval? Like say, you know, if it was a noise permit or like other cities, if they want, if, if somebody wants to have a noise permit issued, they come to council. If it's over 30 days, then they can come to council and ask for permission for it to go farther. And they need, would need to come in and explain why it needs to go 30 days. You know, house burned down, we're still working on it, here's our progress. But at least then it puts it on the responsibility of the council. Yes, ma'am?
Do we want council making those kinds of decisions?
I don't.
I don't. I don't think that's what we're here for.
One statement I've got is, what if you already have the permit hold for a remodel or reconstruction and with that in place, could we use that as, okay, you've got reason to be occupying that RV? And then once that construction's done, then we expect it to be unoccupied?
Absolutely, I think tying it to a permit is totally appropriate. I would, I would, since building permits, you know, they, they've got a pretty long lifetime. I think it's over a year, it might be 18 months.
It's, they're active for six months.
Is that, okay. So maybe you go with building permit, six-month limit type deal?
Yeah. And then they can get an extension. Once they get an inspection, then it gives you another six months.
And then that would be up to the building, the permit process to make that decision?
Yes, and we'd work with them on that. I mean, we're not going to be like, hey, well, you didn't finish your port, so, you know, good luck. You know, so, yeah, no, I mean, obviously we would definitely work with folks on that if that's your guys' intent. All right, we'll, we'll get some language in there for that and bring something back to you.
All right. Anything else? Yes, ma'am?
Okay.
Mayor and council, if we are, this discussion is complete. We will need to make an adjustment to this evening's agenda to remove the general business item that went along with this. I, I placed it on the agenda just in case our discussion went over and it doesn't sound like that's necessary for this evening.
Okay.
Oh, what a shame, we have to take something out, huh?
So someone will have to make a motion to adjust the agenda.
Okay.
All right. All right, seeing there's nothing else, I will adjourn this meeting at 6:40. Gordon, you guys good?
He said yeah.
Russ? Five, four, three, two, one. Good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Malalo City Council for September 10th, 2025. Please join me in the flag salute.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This evening, on the eve of September 11th, as we also mark the fifth anniversary of the wildfires that devastated our region. And in the midst of the tragic losses we have endured the past week, I ask that we take a moment of silence. Let us reflect on the fragility of life. Honor the memory of those we have lost. And extend our deepest gratitude to the heroes who protect and safeguard our communities each day. All right, I thank you all. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's rules of order will be enforced in this meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Audience members, we request that you silence your cell phones and not conduct side conversations during the meeting. Thank you. Up next, we'll do roll call, starting with council. Up next, we'll do roll call, starting with Council Gilmer.
Councilor Gilmer, present.
Councilor Schenkel, present.
Councilor Childress, present.
Mayor Kaiser, present.
Council President Vermillion, present.
Council Bartholomew, present.
Dan Huff, City Manager, present.
City Recorder, Kristy Teetz, present.
Assistant City Manager, Matt Corthell, present.
All right. Council completed discussion related to general business item eight A during the work session. May I have a motion to remove this item from the agenda, please?
I move that we remove item eight A from our agenda.
I second that.
It's moved and seconded, any discussion? All right, Kristy, we call the roll.
Certainly, Council Gilmer.
Aye.
Council Schenkel.
Aye.
Councilor Childress.
Aye.
Council President Vermillion.
Aye.
Councilor Bartholomew.
Aye.
Mayor Kaiser.
Aye.
Thank you, vote passes six zero.
All right, up next is our consent agenda, consisting of work session, meeting minutes, August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, and city council meeting minutes, August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Kristy, we call the roll.
Councilor Gilmer.
Aye.
Council Schenkel.
Aye.
Councilor Childress.
Aye.
Council President Vermillion.
Aye.
Councilor Bartholomew.
Aye.
Mayor Kaiser.
Aye.
Thank you, vote passes six zero.
All right. On June eleventh, City Council received resignation of City Council Rayland Botzford. A resolution was adopted vacating her position, and application from candidates were received. At the last council meeting, council conducted a candidate interview, and Casey Bessinius was appointed as our newest member of the Malala City Council. Casey, would you join me at the dais, please? Nervous?
Yeah, a little bit.
Need to raise your hand. I state your name.
I, Casey Bessinius.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I'll support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
The state of Oregon.
The state of Oregon.
And the ordinances of the City of Malala.
And the ordinances of the City of Malala.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform.
Faithfully perform.
The duties of City Councilor.
The duties of City Councilor.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Quick picture with his family.
Sure, absolutely.
She is such a little cutie, we ran into them.
Council Vermillion, don't you be photobombing them.
I'll make sure you get copies first.
Congratulations and welcome, sir.
Thank you very much.
As many of you noticed, I do have a mask on tonight. It's to protect my fellow counsel. I do have a bit of a head cold, so sorry if I'm a little bit muffled. Up next, I'm gonna do something that does not happen very often, but I felt it was very important that our city did recognize this. We're gonna be looking at proclamation number twenty twenty-five dash oh one, and I am gonna read the entire proclamation out loud. Whereas the City of Malala recognizes and honors the service of all who dedicate their lives to protecting our community, and whereas K-9 Benz faithfully served the Malala Police Department alongside his devoted partner, Officer Brenner, displaying unmatched courage, loyalty, and commitment, and whereas during his years of service, K-9 Benz protected our city, assisted in critical investigations, and stood as a steadfast guardian for his fellow officers and the citizens of Malala, and whereas the partnership between K-9 Benz and Officer Brenner was more than professional, it was a bond of trust, sacrifice, and devotion that exemplified the highest ideals of law enforcement, and whereas K-9 Benz was not only a protector, but also a beloved member of the Malala Police Department family, and is passing deeply felt across our entire community, and whereas we gather today to remember and honor K-9 Benz's service, and to express our gratitude of an entire city for his dedication and sacrifice. Now, therefore, I Scott Kaiser, Mayor of the City of Malala, do hereby proclaim that K-9 Benz shall forever be remembered as a true guardian of Malala. His service will remain in our hearts of all who knew him, and his legacy will stand as a lasting example of courage, loyalty, and devotion. What the audience can't see is we have a very full house in back, and the cameras will not be showing them, but I would like to ask council and city staff to rise and applaud Officer Brenner, and we are with you, sir. Need another? All right, up next. Citizen comment. Citizens are allowed for up to three minutes to present information relevant to the city, but not listed as an item on the agenda. Prior to speaking, citizens shall complete a comment form and deliver it to the city recorder. The city council does not generally engage in dialogue with those making comments, but may refer the issue to the city manager. Complaints shall first be addressed at the department level prior to addressing the city council. This public comment period is for items not on the agenda. If you are speaking on a topic listed on tonight's agenda, you'll be provided with time to speak later in the meeting. Kristy, do we have any public comment tonight?
None this evening, Mayor.
Perfect, thank you. All right, up next, public hearing, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh eight, modifying the development code by allowing fueling stations in central commercial C-one zoning district subject to special use standards. Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh eight, modifying the development code by allowing fueling stations in central commercial C-one zoning district subject to special use standards requires a public hearing. I will open the public hearing at seven eleven. Do any council members wish to acknowledge any actual or potential conflicts of interest? I will say that Mr., I don't know his last name, but Sonny had reached out to me a couple times. I've been in contact with you those couple times, no business was discussed, and I referred him to contact you regarding it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Corthell, I take it you're taking over for Mr. Zender tonight?
Yes, sir.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Obviously, we're here to discuss ordinance twenty twenty-five zero eight, which basically allows fueling stations in the C-one zone, subject to special use provisions. The way this is being done, due to some comments by ODOT and some things, is that we're separating the use, the automotive service station use, from the gas station use, and so automotive service stations will continue to be allowed in all the places they've been allowed, which is not the C-one zone, so you're not gonna mechanic shops and that sort of thing down there, while gas stations will be allowed in the places that they were previously allowed, plus the C-one zone. The council in work session on April ninth considered the advantages and drawbacks of allowing fuel stations in C-one zone, and gave staff guidance to prepare an ordinance that would allow fueling stations in the C-one zone, subject to the special use standards, considering setbacks, screening, access, and proximity to residential uses. In accordance with this guidance, staff proposes to modify the development code by separating automotive fuel stations from automotive service and repair. So basically, it took that one big use and created two, and continues to allow them both in all the places that they were originally allowed, plus the new gas station one, would be subject to special use standards, and creating a new special use standard section that provides the standards for those and how they would need to be developed. And also, in response to council comments from the August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five meeting, the proposed special use standards regarding screening requirements have been revised to reflect the fencing between fueling stations should be sight obscuring, and that the requirements only apply to side and rear yards.
Excellent, thank you. Does council have any questions for staff tonight? All right. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor or opposition? All right, I will close this public hearing at seven fourteen. Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh eight, modifying the development code by allowing fueling stations in central commercial C-one zoning district, subject to special use standards. Ms. Corthell, is there anything else you'd like to add tonight?
No, sir, only that if you look to the exhibit, which would be the actual modified language, you can note that item one C requires a sight obscuring fence, six to eight feet in height, so that addition was made so that those are ensured to be sight obscuring and not having, you know, potentially whatever's going on at the gas station being broadcast to the neighbors.
Okay, perfect, thank you. The first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh eight took place at the August twenty-seventh city council meeting. Having held the second public hearing for this ordinance, we are ready to consider second reading and adoption. Is there a motion to hold the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh eight, modifying the development code by allowing fueling stations in the central commercial C-one zoning district, subject to special use standards?
I move to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero eight, modifying the development code by allowing fueling stations in the central commercial C-one zoning district, subject to special use standards.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any questions or discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I read the wrong one.
Oh.
Thank you. Unfortunately, we are a little out of practice here, because we normally have a unanimous vote, so we do need to hold the second reading, and then a separate motion for the adoption, please.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I apologize, I'll redo that.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, is there a motion to hold the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five, modifying the development code by allowing fuel stations in the central commerce C-one zoning district, subject to special use standards?
I move to hold the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero eight, modifying the development code by allowing fueling stations in the central commercial C-one zoning district, subject to special use standards by title only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any questions or discussion? All right, Kristy, we call the roll.
Certainly, Council Gilmer.
Aye.
Council Schenkel.
Aye.
Council Childress.
Aye.
Council President Vermillion.
Aye.
Council Bartholomew.
Aye.
Council Bessinius.
Aye.
Mayor Kaiser.
Aye.
Thank you, vote passes seven zero.
All right, and is there a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh eight, modifying the development code by allowing fueling stations in the central commerce C-one zoning district, subject to special use standards?
I move.
Go ahead.
I move to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero eight, modifying the development code by allowing fueling stations in the central commercial C-one zoning district, subject to special use standards.
Second.
Moved and seconded, is there any questions or discussion? Kristy, we call the roll.
Council Gilmer.
Aye.
Council Schenkel.
Aye.
Council Childress.
Aye.
Council President Vermillion.
Aye.
Council Bartholomew.
Aye.
Council Bessinius.
Aye.
Mayor Kaiser.
Aye.
Thank you, vote passes seven zero.
And just like that, we're at staff communication.
Shortest meeting in history.
City Recorder Teetz, what do you have for us tonight?
Yes, greetings, Mayor and Council. I wanted to take a moment to provide you all with an update regarding the Park CPC. I will be assuming the role of staff liaison for the committee. City Manager Huff and I are scheduled to meet with the group next Wednesday, September seventeenth. In following up to the city manager's email provided to you all on August twenty-ninth, we feel it's important to address some of the discrepancies and concerns that were shared during the public comment portion of our last council meeting. We also plan to discuss goals and staff support at the Park CPC meeting. Mr. Huff will provide a detailed staff report to you all at the September twenty-fourth meeting, as I'll be attending the annual OAMR conference. So that's what I have for this evening.
Question, liaisons will be there too?
Liaisons will be in attendance. I've had confirmation from both Council Gilmer and Council President Vermillion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Questions, comments? All right. Assistant City Manager Corthell.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening again, council. So I've provided you guys a handout here, which is, I wanted to shed some light on an issue that's been resounding a little bit in town, and, you know, kind of explain that process to you guys, answer any questions you might have. So basically, right now, the middle school project's getting underway with a grading permit, so they put up some construction fencing around the school, grounds not uncommon, very normal, and then worked with city staff to develop a traffic control plan through a right-of-way permit. That plan is attached, at least the drawing of the plan is attached here. And so one of the provisions on that, that I want to draw to your attention, is that it says, you know, traffic may not queue on Hesey Lane. The reason for that is that Hesey Lane is an underdeveloped street, it's about three-quarter width, or maybe a little bit less, which will be changing as the school develops, but it hasn't yet. So when we have traffic queuing on that street and parking lot on the other side, you run into a situation where two vehicles passing side by side is near impossibility, so there's obviously some property danger there, as well as certain emergency apparatus having trouble getting through that area. You could imagine a situation, for instance, where you have a duly parked on one side of the road, and someone queuing in a large truck, it's gonna be very difficult for fire to get through there, and it's very difficult for vehicles to make way for them to get through there when they're staging a line. So that's why our engineering staff determined that whatever plan came together, that queuing on Hesey Lane wasn't gonna be an option, because of the underdeveloped nature of the road. So I was notified by the police department on September eighth that they had gone out and taken a look at that situation, and did observe vehicles queuing on Hesey Lane, five to ten vehicles. So I went out on the ninth, just to verify the situation, make sure it wasn't a one-off, you know, people getting used to a new process and that sort of thing, and again, they were queuing on the road. There's a lot of options to fix this, and this is not uncommon. I'm sure Council Gilmer's familiar with this, that all we need to do, and we've already done it, is reach out to their project manager and their traffic engineer, and we just need to devise a different plan. There's very, very smart people, they can work around this stuff and get it dialed in. There might be some sequencing that has to happen, we have to do that all the time on our projects. For instance, the wastewater treatment plant, we have to continue to operate a plant that processes all the wastewater while we build a new one, and integrate the pipes and all that good stuff. So there's a lot of sequencing that we have to be worried about, something like this, maybe a little less, but again, they're operating a school, and while they're trying to construct another one, which is, it's not easy. So there's just some sequencing that goes into it, a little bit of trial and error sometimes on this stuff, so not a big deal there. We've already reached out, got very good response from their project manager, says I'm on it, so Sam and their project manager are working through this issue, and will be putting this to bed very, very soon. So we're working through that with them to get them a better plan. Secondarily, I wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about the parking north of West Lane on Hesey during the weekend, during athletic events and that sort of thing. This last weekend, Code Compliance Officer Murphy went out, noted that there were several vehicles parked in front, there's about five, no parking signs within about a block and a half length, so it's fairly clear, you know, that there's no parking allowed in the area. He did speak with several of the folks that were parked there, and they told him, hey, we were told to park here, and, you know, by whom, we're not sure, and we didn't actually confirm that either, so who knows? But Mr. Murphy, excuse me, my apologies, Officer Murphy gave warnings. No one got fined. He just gave warnings. He just gave warnings so that, to educate people and say, hey, you can't park here, there's no parking sign here. And again, it's for those same reasons, and it actually maybe even rises to a little bit higher level of concern for safety, because if you get a kid that gets injured on that field or something, and the fire truck or the ambulance can't get through because folks are parked on the side of the road, it's a really, really, really big problem. If you have a fire in the Bear Creek neighborhood and they can't get past that, that's the only way in and out right now. So it is a very, very acute issue, and that's why we want Mr. Murphy to be making sure that folks aren't parking in that area. But I did converse with the school district, although the situation that we're dealing with is tantamount to a situation where someone invites 75 people to their house with no parking, for instance. It's not really a city issue, it's between the landowner and the people they've invited over. If those people go and park in no parking zones, they're likely gonna get citations. That's just kinda how that works. So, but I did, just in an effort to try and be helpful, say, hey, you know, I can see a really easy way for you guys to cure this. You could just move the fence in, in this particular area, about six feet during the weekend, and the city will approve parking on the private property. Just turn it in with your revamped traffic control plan. We'll approve it. They're off the right-of-way. We're not blocking fire apparatus and that sort of thing. Haven't really heard back on that idea yea or nay yet. It was just something I shared with them. They're free to submit any plan they want, or none at all. So I just wanted to kind of update you guys on that and tell you where it sits, and kind of go through that process briefly, and then answer any questions you guys might have about it, because I know it's been a heavily talked about subject recently, so I wanna make sure you guys had the info. So any questions you might have, I'm here for you.
I have a couple clarifying questions. Ms. Corthell, does myself or the council have any authority over ADA parking or anything on the school property?
No.
Or how much parking is allowed on school property for these events?
No.
Perfect. I just, I wanted it to be on public record, because it was getting quite cumbersome, and threats were coming in over the weekend from people saying that this was all us, and this has nothing to do with us. We don't own the property. We did not sign the contract with Malala U Sports or Malala U Football, whatever group is there, and so I just, I wanted to make sure it was very clear that that is outside of this council's purview, and their issue is with the school district, who has been very, very quiet regarding this subject, so.
Yeah, absolutely, and just to add a little meat to that bone, you know, a no parking zone certainly doesn't have ADA access, because you're not supposed to park there. So you don't need ADA access, because you shouldn't be there. And the other thing is, is that there is ADA parking available for these events on both the elementary school parking lot and the middle school parking lot, both of which are open on the weekends, for whatever that's worth.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Anybody have questions, comments? All right, City Manager Huff.
I don't have anything to raise today.
Wow.
Well, we spent a lot of time talking about that.
All right.
And we had a full moon this week, so there's interesting things going on.
Yes, Jake's dust, thanks.
That makes so much sense.
Yeah.
Can't make it up?
Yep, nope.
All right, well, Councilor Bisinius, I know this is your first time with us. This is usually a time where we start with councilors, and give updates on liaison roles, what they're up to, this or that. Anything you'd like to tell us tonight?
Just thank you guys so much for the opportunity to be here and represent the community. Very much looking forward to working with you all, and that's about all I have, because it's brand new.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Bartholomew.
All I have is, I'm gonna be, I plan on setting up a meeting with a senior librarian next Friday, just so I can get in there and see if they have any needs, or, and update on, you know, anything I could find out, so we can be more of assistance.
Okay, perfect, thank you, sir. Councilor Gilmer.
Yeah, I'd like to have a, I place item around the agenda for discussion on the PCP parks again.
Okay.
For next meeting.
Okay, Christie, can we add that?
I'm so sorry, my.
It's okay. Was the city manager distracting you again?
It's important.
I apologize.
That's okay.
Councilor Gilmer, what?
Discussion on the, revisit the CPC parks discussion?
Certainly. All right, thank you. I'll be sure to note that. My apologies.
No, it's okay. I know he's disruptive. It's all good.
Other than that, I have nothing else to report on.
All right, Councilor Schenkel.
The only thing I have is that the Malala Aquatic District has a opening for a board chairperson, and the application is on their website. And I believe, let's see here. I thought it said the date. I'm not seeing it. Anyway, if you're interested in being on the board for the Pool District, please go to their website and, oh, here it is. Applications must be in by September 19th. So, go to their website, fill it out, send it in. We all know how everybody wants to be on boards. Volunteer more time.
Councilor Childress.
Thank you. Monday, the 15th, this coming Monday at 4:15 PM, we're having a very exciting thing happening in the Malala area school district. And that's the grand opening for the middle school. At last, we're gonna start the process of getting a healthy school, a safe school, and have a decent place for our students to spend their years in our future residence here. So I encourage all of you to come out and support that if you can. Again, that's Monday, the 15th at 4:15 PM on the north side of the existing school. Thank you.
Question?
Yes.
Groundbreaking or grand opening? You said grand opening.
Did I, thank you, thank you. Groundbreaking would be more appropriate. Grand opening, two years hence, maybe.
No problem, thank you, ma'am. Council President Vermillion.
Thank you. As City Recorder Teetz had mentioned, the next Park CPC meeting is Wednesday, September 17th at 5:30 at City Hall. I also support Council, or Councilor Gilmer's request to put this Park CPC back on the agenda. School is in its second week, and weather is still really good, so you're gonna see kids walking and riding their bikes continually to and from school, so just continue to be aware of that. Other than that, it's been tough week with some of the things that have been going on within our community. And my thoughts and prayers are with Officer Brenner and his family and the rest of the Malala Police Department. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Let's start off with, I got some correspondence from Miss Lori Hall with Clackamas Community College, and she is looking for a volunteer from our council to be on the Oversight Committee for their bond that just passed. And she said that there's a place on their board, this board, that is overseeing the, all the bond money they're getting, and so I just wanted to put it out to council to see if anybody would like to volunteer for that.
Can I get some details?
I will forward you the email, and then it'll, I'll handshake her email, introduce you to Lori, and she can answer all your questions. It's actually, it's a two-year term, so unfortunately. But it's a, I think they said they only meet like four times a year, and most, I think most of it's gonna be on Zoom, they said, but I will forward you the email and introduce you to Lori, and you can ask all your questions, and just come back and let us know what you decided.
Sounds good, thank you.
As Council President said, our hearts are out with Malala Police Department and Officer Brenner. I know the department is still going to continue to sell these wonderful little plush Benz dolls. The money will be going to the K-9 Department to help get us reestablish when the time they choose the time is right for that to happen. So if anybody's interested, please get ahold of Malala Police Department, and they can get you hooked up with one of them. I'm very tempted to leave Benz there until we get our next dog, just to keep it on council's mind that we're the ones in charge of the budget, and I'd really like to see this continue with our department. I think it did a lot of good for, it did a lot of good for our city. Tomorrow is the anniversary of 9/11. I know the Fire Department will be having a service with the VFW. I believe it probably starts around 5 o'clock.
9:00.
Oh, it's 9:00, okay, 9:00 AM. So if anybody's interested, please swing down to the Fire Department. We're also in the anniversary of the wildfires that we all survived. So, then along with all the other stuff that's been happening in our country, it's been a bit rough. I did, I did get asked just this past Monday to do an interview on Lars Larson, his radio talk show. I got a little more attention to Malala from ODOT. I let city staff know shortly afterward, be prepared that ODOT would probably be calling, and from what I heard, about four hours later, ODOT called. And they're now fixing some things in Malala, go figure. So, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, it's all gas, no brakes. I'm sorry. They want more money, they need to be accountable, and they need to be accountable to our constituents, and so it's, we're just gonna keep going. So, I think, Mr. Corthell, you could probably give a little estimate on how much work they got done this week.
Where at on the 1,000 West Millionaire? Oh, on the drains? They went out there and assessed them and have put together a game plan to address them.
Perfect. Which is a lot closer than we were before. So, so all right, we have more hot days. It might be time for another walk. Other than that, wish you well at your conference. Learn lots, help lots of people. I see your compadre left. I would have wished her well too, but anyway, if there isn't anything else, anything else for the good of the order, I will adjourn this meeting at 7:35.